Heavenly Father, we come before you today with Thanksgiving in our hearts. For the beauty of our country, for the freedom of our country, for the right we exercise today that be able to cast freely our ballot for the candidacy of our choosing. We ask, oh Lord, that you be with those who have, who are running for office. Be with them whether they win or lose, we are appreciative that they are willing to put themselves out to serve their fellow human beings. We also, oh Lord, thank you particularly today for our servicemen and women, both here and abroad, past, present, and future. For those of the individuals who have labored and fought for our right that we exercise today. We ask, oh Lord, that you be with this commission and with the citizens of this county. We ask that you help us do what is best for our county. We ask that you be with all of our citizens and those who have ventured here tonight, we ask that you take them safely home. We thank you again, oh Lord, for so many, many things. And we ask that you help us serve you as we serve our fellow citizens. We ask these things if you're willing to. All right. We have one other thing that we have not been doing for a number of years. And in the political forum, it was brought out by one of the candidates, Ms. Chune, that she wanted to see the pledge allegiance as a part of our opening process. I don't want to wait until she either wins or her opponent wins. I think it is certainly a good suggestion and we are going to do that. And if you would all please rise, we will say thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chune. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the October 21st of May. A motion for approval, a second, a motion and a second, need discussion. All in favor, please see if I'm raising your hands. Motion carries. Our next item is the appearance of citizens. We have Mr. Scott Moy regarding JCG Cook Foods issues. Scott Moy?
Scott Moy, 14126, Highway 116, I'm at that.
I see that. Good. I guess you were going up there.
Always.
He was out there.
I was out there with Greg. I knew that one would fly anyway, but I gave him a try.
We got to try everything we can.
Well, we can't quit. That's the whole time, just can't quit.
And I did talk to him later in the day and they had finished the trench from where they washed the trucks on the left-hand side as you face it, so that, that issue should be eliminated. The drainage issue, you know, you already got the DOD, the cost of trying to reroute that, the drainage is pretty, pretty high unless we can get some help with it. But I did mention the fact that maybe they could use that area right to the right-hand side as you face it where the old store was, is potentially an area where drainage based or retention pond. I didn't get a no. I kind of got a little think about it, so if we get direction to go that way, that's something we can accomplish fairly easy if one wants to do that and.
Let me ask you a question. Why would the county have to do it?
Are we on the excavator?
Well, I mean, it is their property and it's on their property. Why wouldn't they be responsible for it?
They don't have to do anything. We're trying to make it as easy as possible to.
Well, that's the other part of what I understand right there. They don't have to do anything. That's the wrong part of what I'm concerned. But do you pay local waterside?
Problem is with those, yes, they do show an elevated level of pickled corn, cold corn. But the standards are for running streams which don't correlate to what we, the sample we got. It does, it does have a certain evidence that we tend to show. I think it can demonstrate that there is a higher level on the right-hand side of the plant than on the left-hand side of the plant. But beyond that, you know, I, now that lawyer and I don't play on one of TV, so I don't know where I go with that argument beyond that. I mean, if you, if you, if you, if you were going to be taking the court, the case forth, then certainly I would use the evidence if I have somebody that was qualified to speak on a scientific basis, discuss it other than somebody that's got a master's degree in public administration.
So it's looking like basically if I want something done, I won't have to go to court.
He's the attorney, I'm not.
We can certainly do that.
Oh, I know I can.
Scott, I.
I'm trying to avoid all of this. I mean, I don't see why we all can't come to an agreement with them to get these few problems taken care of.
Let me interject something. We did get readings and some of those readings were above allowable levels. It was for running stream, as Greg said. My question is, well, you know, it was running water at the time because it was, it was from rain. Still, whether it's running or not, it does indicate that there is something above the allowed level.
I agree.
And I want to go with that and see what we can do with those numbers, if anything, to get that corrected because it is evidence.
Right.
Of, of something coming off there. And even though, even if it's running water, that's current stuff. That they can't put, argue too much that that's always happened over time and it's sitting there. I think that, which to me makes it even worse.
Yeah, because it, when it runs through my property, it goes into a creek in the back and go right on down to another.
Yeah, I want to follow that and see if there's anything we can do that way. Trying to find something. I don't want to just say, okay, it's either stamped.
Should we sample the stream? I mean, if you get the permission to come on board.
Fort Creek is one that needs to be sampled.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Or the one behind the house too. I mean, any one down in that area, but Fort Creek is one that really needs some looking into.
With the, if the levels is, oh, with acceptable standards for the creek, could we get the state EPD to step in if they want?
Then you get, then you would have possibility of EPD stepping in to do it something. But it's not, then we're, back to Spurwell.
I think we ought to, will Lance come out and sample those and with permission on your property, with permission there? I don't know where that old creek is, is that?
Just going towards shallow right down.
Yeah, whose property is that on?
Oh, those different ones. I'm sure they let you do it.
Does it cross, does it cross the road where you have access via upper bridge?
That's probably.
Scott, that, that water running to the creek, where does it eventually end up? Do you know what?
I don't know exactly. I can't say, but all them creeks go, it might run into Fort Creek eventually. I have, I don't have any of that information. But it all heads that same way.
Eventually end up in the Mulberry area?
Eventually.
In the river.
In the river.
It's probably.
Center of ours. Well, see, we don't, we only test, we only test for one thing, right? We didn't test nothing else.
Well, that's all you have capability, but it's still, you have the indication.
It's a, but there's no telling. I'm, I'm more worried about chemicals and all that stuff they use up there too. You know, in long run, that's going back during too.
Probably ought to ask.
Lance doesn't, yeah, Lance doesn't have that capability.
Yeah, but he maybe would know.
EPD, I can give it a hold of our EPD representative.
I think we need to do that. I mean, we need to know whether we've got a problem or not.
Does Department of Agriculture, Georgia Department of Agriculture have any jurisdiction?
I don't believe so. What I see out there is USDA parking spaces, I mentioned, they're, folks have regulation
My experience is that this would be a good type of test for the creek because it's low season and if it's going to show high, it'll show now. If you wait a month or so, I mean, for a change considerably. We did mountain, mountainside creek and at this time of year, it showed extremely low work, presses clean.
Well, I think we need to pursue that, Greg. Once we're ready to do all the testing, we do. I mean, I, I think we ought, we need to try and get, if we get, get data from this that say there's a problem that needs to be addressed, then we need to get that done. If there's not, then.
Going into clean water, right? Any tributary is a, is.
State water.
Is a state water.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if there's a branch, you know wider than this, a desk project, it would still stay water.
But I've challenged anybody to look on there and try to find all these things that are against them right now, the Cook Foods, all these charged with EPD and all them. You can't find it on a computer. You can find Cook Foods and you can go back and find all kinds of stuff where the $20,000 fines against cables, was able there and all this? But you find Cook Foods, JCG, pages omitted for some reason. So as further down in there, then I'll be able to find it.
I'm going to ask a few questions about that too.
But another thing, the noise is getting worse. They're finding more noise. Every, every day is something new. It's like they're playing pitch with those chicken cooks up there. I mean, it's just something slamming on the concrete. This is at four o'clock in the morning, two o'clock. And then that's shredder steering right in. That thing's awful. I mean, it's getting worse too. But like I say, we've got two more months, mate.
I agree. I would give it a say, probably two more months on that.
Obviously, there's lots there.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anything else?
Mr. Harrelson?
Mr. Harrelson?
Mr. Harrelson, 159, I saw. Johnson, something about USDA. Up to, just a few years ago, eight, 10 years ago, USDA had a team, men's inspectors, that worked every shift. And they also had a team that stayed out to clean up. Each one of those teams was headed up by a person who has the same title that Jim Lewis Doctor of veterinary medicine.
Now, this is the team at that plant, Bobby, or this?
Every shift had a doctor at that plant. Today, they use quality control. They highly own people to check that. I guess I might add license of staff. You asked about how the creeks flow. Fort Creek is probably the most. The Dirtless Creek in West Georgia. It runs under Highway 116. It's a big pot of land with Bethelm Creek, Fetter Creek, and Copland Creek come together at the end of the bottom to make Doyle Mill Creek. Doyle Mill flows on through the mountain into the Mulberry Creek, the highway three road. This drainage area, because Scott, those lake is, is not on that drainage area. Water out of that lake, come down across the B Street two times. It can't make a loop. It crosses in, it crosses down the end of the loop. It runs into Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek runs through the, the back, lower side of the soccer field. It runs into Palmetto Creek. Palmetto runs into Mulberry, right above the Upback Field down. So that's when the two come together. The flow path is before. Low, I said the creek runs in. A bunch of creeks go off the south side by a mountain running to it. It goes into Goldrod Lake. The generators at Goldrod are top loading. Anything that floats, it goes right, they're generators in the lake island. Three island hills all over it's from. Lake. All of it down is top loading. The same thing, it goes through there, it goes down through the new plumbers, whitewater rivers, the people play in. We need the riverkeeper, we need a lot of people in on this thing to play stop the, like I said, Jim knows more about, he called it than anybody in this group. I know he doesn't. But that's, that stuff's ugly.
Yeah.
It's definitely kind. You get on a piece of meat, you put meat on a stove, it took 150 degrees, you kill it. But what about the stuff that's on your lettuce, carrots, the stuff that you don't cook? That's what make you sick. Three weeks ago, same time we talked about these tests, my great-granddaughter, lived down up on B Street, was in the hospital for seven days when he caught it. I want to be fair about this. The doctor told us that she got it from something size out of that creek. I don't know if that's taken it for a while. I hope he's right, but if he's not, how about Georgia, Chicago, you figure that area?
Well, that's, that's.
I was six days old in first grade and in the hospital. Seven days when he caught it.
She okay now?
It can happen. You look it up on the net. It takes children and old people more than anybody.
Is she okay now?
Yeah. They kept him in the hospital because she could go two days without taking antibiotics to keep the temperature down before they let him home. So they kept him seven days.
Well, this is helping to know where these creeks go. Thank you for that.
I'm trying to be fair about that. All we know, it had nothing to do with the JCG.
We will keep pursuing that and see, see where we are.
I'm like Scott, this is, well, probably they are responsible for anything that leaves that front. They're responsible. It's not Harris County's problem. It's not DOD's problem. It's, it's really not Scott's problem. It's, it's how somebody get, stop it.
No, we just have to prove that that's what it is, Bobby. And once, once we got that, then, then we've got something to go with. So that's what we're trying to do.
I think it's the point right there, enough Scott to get injunction against him.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We will keep pushing ahead.
Lot of reasons, Lot of reasons, a good point. If we can, if we can measure the ECO up, that's something certainly what, not. How they do these tests.
From head to end, I thought, it's my belief, this stuff is cut and killed all over by chicken trucks. They unload the truck, they don't, they don't wash the cages out of this bank. They come out of that plant, all that stuff is in their feathers and all the other stuff is in the bottom of the crates are blowed out all along the highway. It's not just right there in front of Scott, it's all the Hamilton, it's up the pine knot, it's I-18 to Jones Cross Road, it's up 219 to the front. You can find feathers, stuff on the side of the road anywhere you stop to look. And they, and contaminated. They need to just make that stuff holy bees.
All right, old business. We have financial statement for August, which we tabled because it did not have the explanation that we had wanted to appear on there, which was handed out prior to the meeting tonight. Really just affected two departments. It affected insurance and it affected, it affected the operations. Take just a minute and review those if you haven't already and then entertain a motion.
Just for clarification, I also need you charts on lost its loss and the 2014's loss balance sheet as well, that were not included in your September financials, just
Yeah, all right, do we have a motion?
I'll make mine.
Motion for approval.
For approval. I'll make this, I'll second it.
Motion and a second discussion. And just, just for you folks up there in the audience, what we really have asked for on this is, if you look at these things on a month-to-month basis, which we do very frequently, a department will show that it's really out of line. But we know it's not because, for instance, in insurance, it's where we may pay it twice a year, play six months at a time. But the way it hit the budget, it hasn't evenly crossed all 12 months. What we have asked and is now being given to us is that where these aberrations show up, that it be explained so that if, if any of y'all were to pick up this budget and take a look at it, you would know where those, what those differences are. I think something that we, we have known all along, but somebody who didn't know it for long picking it up, they would think that maybe we were out of control. That, that's the reason for that. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor of approving the financial statement for office? Motion carries. All right. We, we have a real privilege tonight and we do have proclamation here that, but this is, I'm going to read this. I guess that's probably the best way to explain it. I believe you have the folks from Central Missionary Baptist Church here. If you folks would please stand. This is the proclamation. Whereas in 1884, 130 years ago, the Spirit of God formed an assembly of Christians who purchased 10 acres to glorify God and become Central Missionary Baptist Church, thus establishing the first African-American church in Eldersley, Georgia. And whereas, under the leadership of its pastor, a facility was constructed to praise the Lord Jesus Christ to worship and assemble and to meet the needs of its members and the greater community. And whereas Central Missionary Baptist Church has experienced continued growth and development and is known for its strong spiritual ministers and teachers. And whereas being a strong power of strength and family center, Central Missionary Baptist Church is often referred to as Holy Ghost headquarters. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners proclaims Monday, November the 17th, 2014, as Central Missionary Baptist Church Day in Harris County, Georgia, in honor of its 130th anniversary, so proclaiming its fourth day of November of 2014. We have a motion for approval, so we'll have a session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just interject quickly since we have Veterans Day coming up as well. A representative here is a retired Command Sergeant Major. He has that athlete kind of high status. Thank you for your service, sir.
Command Sergeant. Okay. All right, we got a motion, you vote. All in favor, motion carries. For or not, if y'all can come up and please introduce yourself. I sue, you're the pastor?
No.
No? Okay. But you?
My name is Rosie Richards. I'm a lifelong member of the Eldersley community. Been in Central Baptist Church all my life. My mom joined Central Baptist Church in 1929. And my grandfather, great-grandfather, we built that as a minister at Central. And of course, this is my husband, and I'm Sergeant Major Jimmy Richards, 53 years in uniform.
All right. Congratulations. This is a graduation tree, you take that back to your church. We are proud that you have chosen Harris County to be your home and have survived and done so well for 130 years.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you get 130 and big middle. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And to your service, sir.
And I do want to thank those members of military who have served or serving now. It is, Veterans Day is coming up next week and we do very much appreciate your service and thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all you have done. Appreciate it. All right, we will now skip over to, it's time for the public hearings. The procedure is that I will call the public hearing to order. I'll read the application. The applicant or his or her representative will then come forward to make their presentation. After that is completed, those in favor of the application will be able to have their say. When all of those have been completed, we will then allow individuals in opposition to the application to have their say. And when those have been completed, there will be no more citizen comments other than the applicant or his or her representative will be able to make their closing remarks. And I do want to thank those members of military who have served or serving now. It is Veterans Day is coming up next week. And we do very much appreciate your service and thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all you have done. Appreciate it. All right, we will now skip over to, it's time for the public hearings. I will, procedure is that I will call the public hearing to order. I'll read the application. The applicant or his or her representative will then come forward to make their presentation. After that is completed, those in favor of the application will be able to have their say. When all of those have been completed, we will then allow individuals in opposition to the application to have their say. When those have been completed, there will be no more citizen comments other than the applicant or his or her representative will be able to make their closing remarks. And any rebuttal that they might have. Commissioners will then ask questions. I will close the public hearing and then we will take applications. And we have three applications tonight, so we will do them separately, obviously. Commissioners, if you would, please forward your conflict of interest statement. The first applicant, the application is for Carl and Debbie White, 11, 911 Whitesville Road, Fortston, Georgia, for a special use permit for an equestrian facility. It's on Land Lots 168 and 169, Land District 19, Map 031, Parcell 032. This use is permitted in A1 agricultural forestry. The current zoning of that property is A1 agricultural forestry. Planning Department has noted that this should be, or they have recommended to us approval of this application. They have also made several suggestions. Planners made several suggestions that we might wish to consider along with this. Those are, one, to increase the property line setback from the stables to 100 feet. Two, any outdoor lighting for the riding arena and stables must be designed and maintained so that no lighting becomes a nuisance to adjoining properties. Number three, to limit the use to that stated by the applicant. Number four, no advertising to the public. And number five, limit the number of horses to 20 and the clinics to three times a year, weekends only. Comment is that the approval of a special use permit to allow equine boarding, training, and clinics would be suitable in this area. At this time, the application is strictly for the equine facility. The applicant has been notified that charity events for skeet shooting or anything is not being addressed by this. I sue you of rights. If you would please tell us what you want us to know.
My name is Debbie White, this is my husband Carl. We basically planned on doing an open-air cover ring. And as far as, and having an additional barn, a fixed install barn back there. And we wanted to use that so that I could invite my friends over and hold a clinic, so that we could have a commission there to help us, you know, get a little bit better in the field of competition that we go to the shows to compete in. And these clinics would probably be, you know, two or three days at the most. As far as the lighting on the arena, it's not stadium lighting. The arena would have, it's an open-air arena, it's not an auditorium, just an open-air arena, but it does have a roof on it in case it rained or in the heat of the summer or something like that. And the only lighting that would be used at night would be ceiling lights, if they straight down. So there'd never be any high, I guess like a baseball field or something there. You wouldn't have any lighting like that. You know, I haven't really given any thought. I might not have, but two clinics a year. But I would hate to be, if we had a big show coming up and some of my friends wanting to get together, that I had already had three clinics and we couldn't get together to work on our skills. I don't anticipate having more than 20 horses back there at any given time. I have seven horses on the, you know, front, this property that fronts the road. It's been there for two years now.
Want to give them a way?
Yeah, I have, well, I think they've got, you have a flat there that shows us where the arena, where I proposed to build the arena and the additional barn. And one thing I do want to say, I have never and do not ever intend to publicly advertise for anything like this. I don't want to stable horses to rent. I don't want to stable horses that somebody is going to be coming in and out of my property because it's their horse. The only people I want back there doing what I'm doing are my friends. A half a dozen or eight or 10 ladies, they're going to come back there and we're going to all ride our horses. So it's not like I'm going to be having 100 horses back there and, you know, 75 trailers or whatever. So as far as advertising, I don't have a problem with that at all because I'm not going to advertise. One other thing I did want to mention, we have are in the process of going through an application for a conservation easement on the property as it is now. And that's what all these little, the little draw here for the arena because once we complete that application and it's filed, we can't do anything else on that property. That's our main goal, is to preserve that property in its natural state. They had their, I don't even know what they called it, almost like a biologist, where they went over the property, looked at all vegetation, all wildlife, down to whatever's crawling around in the trees. Because they want to identify everything. And he did say that there were a couple of species of plants that were native, that were very important. But we're going through a lot of hoops with them so that we can lock this property down because it's a beautiful piece of property. And the last thing we want to see is, you know, a commercial facility or a residential facility back, neighborhood back there because it's just a beautiful property. And they're not making any more land. And we're hopeful, you know, to have the wildlife there, to hike through it, to walk through it, to ride. And all I want them to do is what has been suggested to us. We invited the planning committee, we invited Becky Langston up there and we basically showed them what we had done and spoke about what our plans were and what we wanted to do and wanted to be sure that we wouldn't be stepping on anyone's toes. And what we were going to do was basically invite my friends over for a weekend ride. And I can do that. But if they come over and they, and I have somebody that wants to stay for a week and they want their horse there, they, you know, I don't want someone saying, she's back there boarding horses and she's not allowed to do that on her private property. And that's where the special use department, I have never heard a special use permit, didn't even know what it was.
What actually brought the special permit idea into play was most of these ladies and possibly men, they have a pool behind horse trailers. And they all have their own hookups before they back into the spot. When they go to a show, they back the trailer in and they hook up their power and they run their lights and air conditioning heaters and so forth. And as we started talking about the designated areas that we had set aside to have of those parking, and as I was talking to the planning folks about the power and so forth, we got into a question about how many amps could possibly be used down at the riding area versus a typical home site. You know, the two people that this property truly would affect in us putting a riding area back there as well as a barns, I heard from one of them, he called me and asked me not to put any goats on it. And I told him I didn't think we would be putting any goats out there. But the 100-foot setback, as you see the property sitting over here on the side, this is a real terrain area. And we've already cut the top of the mountain off there where the barn, the riding area is proposed inside that circle. And I really don't have another area for the horse stall, that's where it is there. And it is about 20 foot from the property line as it is now. The lady who owns that land has verbally told me that she'll sell it to me upon her retirement. That may or may not happen, but I'm sure she got a notice as to what we were doing back there. And I haven't seen or heard her at one of the meetings. You know, as to the number of the requirements and the stipulations to be put on the back of the property, we don't think there should be any. We don't think what we're asking for is unreasonable. We could basically go back there and close the gate and have as many people back there as we wanted to. The property is set up, we could put an, we could put an arena back there. We could put a riding, a covered riding arena back there without any additional permits. We thought by being, doing the right thing, we asked Brian and the folks to come out and look at it. And we showed them everything that we would propose including the pavilion and the future hunting lodge that we proposed and put up on the area there that's identified. But we've invested some $10,000 already in the conservation easement. And I've identified these properties and they already have a base foundation of this schematic as it's set up as to what will be allowed and will not be allowed at future dates. So to go back and rewrap this, for a 100-foot setback, I don't think it's necessary. As it is, we could have a zero setback with cows and horses and pigs and goats or whatever things we want right there to the property line of this Lot 167 because of their drawings, Land Lot 168, which is agricultural. And we could just run a block water fence down there and keep any type of horses or cows that we wanted to have back there. So limiting to 20 horses doesn't make any sense. So I guess we've gone to a lot of expense and science and identifying and trying to be good neighbors. And we still have opposition from some folks that are over in Calaway Woods that they couldn't shoot a rifle and hit the back part back there where we're going to be holding these events. And I think it's starting to put additional limitations. But an open-air arena and a horse stall back there probably doesn't make a lot of sense to us. And we hope you have supported it as we've submitted it.
This is Land Lot 167. Is that also your problem?
No, sir. There's a 28th parcel in there when the Calaway Woods broke up that a friend of mine bought and was going to build back there and he passed away.
Leo Lewis.
Leo Lewis. And his wife owns it. And she'll never build back there. That's from her words, I believe.
The circle, the dotted circle you have there, what's the radius of that circle? Or what's the purpose?
I don't know.
Well, what, I spoke with Major Harrison, the surveyor. And I'm not really sure why he did that circle. But I called him, we, I think he had some questions as well.
He probably highlighted it somewhere else in more detail.
In the lower left-hand corner, yeah.
Yeah.
But he, he.
He answered.
Did you show that what's in there?
But basically, he said, you know, that circle just kind of showed the area of where the barn and the arena was currently.
He just pulled it out of here.
I see why he pulled it out, yeah.
Most of the land, there are 60 acres that goes from the left as you're looking at Land Lot 168. All of that we've converted to pasture for cattle and for the horses. And it's all fenced and cross-fenced. There's a pond in front of the arena site there. It's fairly hilly and fairly growing, so there wouldn't be much other site to put a horse barn in there that would be accessible to the arena.
All right. That all you want to do? Okay. All right, thank you for that. Now, hear from anyone, any citizens who wish to speak in support of this application? Yeah, when after they rebuttal. Any who wish to speak in favor of this application? All right, and any citizens here who wish to speak in opposition to this application? You do please come forward with your name and your address. Make your comments.
My name is Jim Hill. I live at 44 Troop Drive in Fortston, Georgia. It's at the corner of Whitesville Road and Troop Drive. We're just down the road from this, and Calaway Woods. I'd like to, we were at the planning commission. And I didn't know that the restrictions that Ms. Hathaway put in there were as part of that. I think those restrictions all remain.
Actually, it was not part of the actual planning commission document. They were recommendations from the plan.
If this is approved as it's presented there, it will be an ordinance that can be on that land forever?
Goes with the land, yes, sir.
That's my thought.
Any conditions go with it?
What happens if they change their mind or the property changes hands?
Goes with the land. So if they were to sell the property or will it to someone, those conditions still remain. For those, for conditions to change, whoever wants to change it would have to apply for a change in conditions to the planning commission that come before this one.
I would note that they are somewhat hamstrung additionally by the conservation easement. That's not, that's going to contain that special use.
Did it say that in that plan?
But the easement has not been issued, is that correct?
No, it's in process. But there's a significant tax sentence to that for doing that, so there's an advantage for them to do that.
And I'd like to see that. Yeah, I'd like to see that plan.
This is, this is what we have. You want to take a look at that? Oh.
It's got the position of the barn and everything?
Yes. Yeah, and then that, the bottom corner there, the bottom left-hand corner of that flat is what the area in the circle is enlarged under the bottom left-hand corner.
My concern is for commercial use. I'm a commercial broker and advisor. I see this every day. I have a real problem with having a possibility of commercial use. What I would like to see are restrictions put on it where there are no commercial boarding, no commercial horse shows, and no retail sales, which I understand if you're a class father of an equine, you can do that. What I would like to respect is to admit that you put those restrictions on there so that this would not be a commercial use. I like the idea, excuse me, I like the idea of the conservation easement and hope it goes through. But in case it doesn't, what happens, what happens if this property changes hands down the block? I have a real concern about, I have a concern with increased traffic if it's a commercial use. Those are my real concerns.
Make sure you get all three of them. No commercial boarding, no sales. And what was the third one?
Commercial horse shows.
No commercial horse shows.
I think under A1's owner, he can't call us correctly. He can cook a barn, he can build a stable. He can grow his own feed and so forth. All that is approved in agriculture. That's why I don't see any need for rest of this. And I think the restrictions of this Hathaway suggested be a part of it also.
Anything else? Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? All right, there being none, no one else. And Ms. White, unless you make your, if you may, wish to make any closing statements?
Well, first and foremost, as I said, it's not going to be a commercial facility. I'm not going to advertise to the public. I do want to have the right to invite my friends back there and ride and work cattle and have someone help us fine-tune our competitive skills. I don't want to be limited to only three weekends a year to do that on my own property, my own backyard. I really don't want to be limited to 20 horses. I mean, I've got seven on my property now. So, and if I had eight or 10 friends that came over, it takes, it takes three horses, three or four horses to even do what we're doing in a pen for one person to work. So it would be kind of hard for me to have more than two people over there to even have a clinic if we were limited to having 20 horses back there.
Can you tell them specifically, are you talking team roping?
No, no, no. It's cutting, cutting horses, it's not team roping.
It's similar to it.
It's cutting, it's where, it's where you have a group of cattle and it's what started on the ranch where a rider would go into a herd of cattle and is going to. on the ranch where a rider would go into a herd of cattle and is going to take one out for branding, not roping, but just cutting that particular cow out of the herd.
So you're saying there's three riders, not three?
There's two at the corner, two out here, and then there's the person that's competing.
At all.
It takes five horses.
I understood. I was just making sure this wasn't multiple horses per, just one person?
Mr. White, one of our, we may appear that we're splitting hairs here, but this is my wife's hobby. I wish I could find a way to make money at it by selling. I'd pay ten dollars a bell because it costs a lot to do. But these girls have little jackpots where they'll go back there and they'll have a clinic. And by the way, the guy that comes to the clinic, you have to pay him to come to the clinic. So the girls make fifteen, fifty or seventy-five dollars a piece to have a clinic. And that would not be deemed commercial, that we're doing a commercial enterprise. They have jackpots. They'll put twenty-five, fifty dollars into the pot, ten of them will go in there and cut the cows, and there'll be a judge. They'll judge them. In the winter, we win two or three hundred dollars. But when they get through winning two or three hundred dollars, it probably cost them three thousand to come there that weekend. So it's a, it's a recreation and it's not a, it's not a business. We're not in the hay selling business. We're not in the horse selling business. We're not in the tax selling business. You know, I've known Jim a long time, but they're just wrong on this. We want to go back there. Our property is about a mile off of the dirt road that, by the way, a lot of people opposed to having that paved, which we want to have it paved. Hopefully, one day, we will have it paved. And they oppose that as well. But we have the right to live on a paved road just as well as they do. But their opposition to this is unfounded. We're not going to be having lights. It's going to shine out. There's not going to be a speaker system. The girls have horse shows that usually end by the time the sun has set. And again, we're here for the second time because it was recommended to us to look, to do the right thing, to remove all the possibilities of you guys going back there and running a commercial enterprise. You just come on in here and get it zoned for a special use. I guess it's equine arena?
Well, the, and that really, I think, the way it was worded made people think that I was going to have some kind of commercial facility back there. And I can't say enough, I don't want to take care of somebody else's horses. I don't want to be responsible for somebody else's horses. I don't want to rent horses for somebody to fall off and sue me. I don't want any part of that. This is not going to be a stable for people like Butts Mill Farm where you go and you ride a horse. That is not what I'm willing to do. I have my personal horses there and I want to be able to invite my girlfriends over, have a clinician there where there's eight or ten of us and we spend two or three days honing our skills and then we have a little jackpot to see who learned anything about it. And that's all I'm willing to do.
So that's, that's where we are. We're here to do the right thing.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Your questions first?
Ladies first.
I just want to make a few comments and I want to make it to you, to the two of you. I certainly have no opposition to what you're trying to do down there. However, I will tell you, I'm going to explain my vote this way. We have had two other applications along the same lines and two other sections of the county of what you want to do. And I voted no on both those applications. And the reason I did is I'm opposed to the special use classification on that because it does stay with the land. And down the road, if you do sell the land, my fear is that it can move into something else that you would not want it to be.
But if that conservation easement is in place, which we are, it's supposed to be done by the end of the year. I should have brought the application, the copy of the application, but I didn't think to do that. I'm thinking that the conservation easement, if I may be wrong, but I don't think that would be applicable to even be done with that conservation easement. It's a lifetime. I thought, I thought it was on the property.
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's.
It's, it's there.
You're talking about two different times.
Okay, you're talking about this tax, you're talking about.
Tracy, Tracy has an answer.
The property's already in the county.
Can I, Tracy's about to try to answer this.
You're talking about two different things. One is the tax conservation assessment. One's a conservation easement. I think if they're going with the conservation easement, it is a lifetime.
It is a lifetime.
If it is with the land trust.
And with the property.
And I guess my question would be why they have to have special use?
Well, she's still proposing to do the equine boarding on the section of the three-hundred-and-eighty-one acres.
And the boarding would be for the women that come to the clinics?
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to do.
Not boarding in the typical sense where you pay.
They come, they not board.
This is just while they're there.
Yes, exactly. These will be women that live in Alphama, North Georgia, North Florida, and they'll come together for two or three or four days and then they'll go back home.
Becky, I respect your opposition.
Let me throw out some suggestions here. I haven't kind of taken in what both sides are going to say. If we struck the property setback lines, let that throw lighting in because that's not going to be an issue from what I understand. Leave in the limited, the no advertising to the public. Put in there that you will have no commercial sales on the property as well as stipulations. And that will placate some of the neighbor's fears, I think. Maybe that package, of course, I don't know how y'all are going to vote, but I'm just saying a package that would be acceptable to you.
I agree with that.
I have no problem with, I'm not going to sell anything. I don't want to sell anything, so I don't have a problem with that.
You know, any other stipulations, Greg, you can never enforce. If you said you can only have five shows a year back there, nobody's going to know.
Well, it's not a show.
Well, nobody's going to know when eight or ten trailers come down the road from different ways on any given day, how many shows are back there? I mean, it's just, it's just not going to be anything that's enforceable.
I forgot to say we have drones now.
I don't.
They're going to count.
It's about a half a mile back off the road and it's, you know, I have more guys.
It's a unique piece of property, I agree.
It is. I have more guys who come back there on a hunting lease than will come back here for a horse show on a weekly basis during hunting season. But I'm not opposed to putting that language in there.
What about the size of the barn you're going to put on it? Would you limit the horses to sixteen?
Well, I mean, I've got, I've got an eight-stall barn on the property, not on that piece of property. I don't want to be limited to the number of horses that I can have just because.
I'm just going back, you know, I think Ms. Hadaway said.
That's all that would be, that's all that would be stated there.
Yeah, she said.
But there may be more horses there during that day.
I know, but she said that she planned for a sixteen-stall barn.
That's exactly right, sixteen-stall barn.
Sixteen-stall barn or twenty-stall barn? It's twenty because there's two wash areas, a tack room.
Well, yeah, it is.
And it's room for sixteen horses.
Sixteen horses.
And I'm good with that. I hope for that.
And that's in this one, then plus you would have yours, salad.
I'm right.
So if the barn that you're looking to build is just sixteen, any overages would either have to be in a paddock or.
Exactly. Or, and there would be, there would be some that they would, wouldn't even stay overnight. There are a lot of people that would be close enough that they would come and work Saturday or Friday or whatever and go back home that night.
Mr. Lowry?
Actually, most of my questions were answered in the meantime. I have a couple of extra. How many acres of pasture? Sixty. And the concern about traffic, if we were to have one of these clinics, about how many vehicles would be coming and going over the course of two, three days?
Probably, yeah, probably, well, there might be eight at the most. I just, I don't think I'll ever have more than eight or ten trailers back there at any given time. Like I said, some of the folks will be close enough, they'll come and they do their little thing and then they leave. But, you know, for somebody coming from North Georgia or Jacksonville Farm, I've got some great friends there that have been to my place and brought three horses and they stayed for a whole week. You know, they don't want to make a day trip. Work, come drive that morning, work that day, then go back home. So.
There's more cars that go back there on a weekly basis to dump trash than would be coming.
Exactly. That is so true.
I can assure you of that.
Unaltered. Dumping not only trash, but animals as well.
And burning cars and dumping animals is.
That's a, that road is not best.
Looking at the plan here, where the existing pavilion area is, what would you guesstimate from where the pavilion area is, what would you guesstimate as to how far from that to the nearest home?
To the nearest home?
You're talking about where the proposed riding areas are being?
The riding area? Or the hilltop? The pavilion on the hilltop. Those are two, I think he's talking about the hilltop.
The hilltop.
Yeah, those are two, well, the hilltop really has nothing to do with the horses. No, it's, yeah, that's a separate area. But I think that's what he's talking about.
This says existing pavilion area.
It is, it's a gazebo with a deck.
Okay. Two hundred yards, two hundred yards.
From, from the, an existing home?
The nearest house is my brother's, elder's house, which is up on White's Road on the back of the, buried back of the property.
That track.
Track two up there in the corner.
There's two old tracks right at the north corner at White's Road.
And from that, from that proposed open-air arena to that house is probably a half a mile. I'm just guessing. Those two, those two lots right there with that easement coming through it, there's thirty acres on each side of that easement between the three-hundred-and-seventy-five acres in the back and the White's Road. And then on the other side of it is woods that Jay Steppes will evolve that he's planning to put into a conservation easement as well.
I agree with you, by the way, Mr. White, that I don't see any setback of blockwater fence on the property line. All right. Jim, you have any questions? The hill pro, loudspeaker system, you don't plan on having it in Callaway, so we can put that in there?
Because I'm not going to hold shut this.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Any other questions? Close public hearing. We're going to take a vote.
May I ask one question first? I'm sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the, if I can do all the stipulations. But primarily, the no commercial.
I can reiterate.
All right, those were, those three were commercial boarding, commercial sales, and commercial horse shows, so.
And you also, you were going to strike the increase of setback?
Yeah. The setback would not be a part of the motion.
And the limited horses, I think it's going to be struck.
And then the barn?
Beg your pardon?
Does it mean the barn size?
The barn to sixteen stalls?
Twenty.
Twenty?
I guess we're going to second the motion and then we'll have kind of a motion.
Let me make sure we get that settled.
I thought we were trying to get everything down.
No commercial boarding, sales. Or horse show, commercial horse show.
You would strike one of five and then add the additional stipulations if I got it right.
I would say that you would add, add limit the barn, the stable to twenty. Twenty horses.
Well, that's not part of Joey's motion at this point. Joey's made.
I'll allow.
All right, all right. So limit, limit the barn to twenty. No advertising to the public, that's, that's fine. Limit the use to that state by the applicant, that's no problem there. Okay, we strike the setback. All right, then, so Jim, what you're proposing is by limiting the barn to twenty, that would be the only thing, and if they, if they had a few more horses than that, than were in that, that's okay.
If they had a few more horses, they had a few more horses.
Okay. And what about limiting, the other one was, limiting the times per year, the clinics per year?
That's not a part of the motion.
That's not part of your motion. All right, so we.
Does the lighting stay in there?
Yeah, the lighting stays in there.
It shouldn't be an issue anyway, as described.
It shouldn't be. All right, so that's the motion. Now, we have a second.
I have a second.
Jim, second's the motion, and you have any other conditions you'd like to add? I would like it just so it's in there and the condition of no, no loudspeaker system.
That's fine.
I'm okay with that.
I give you word, but just, again, that's just additional protection. And the number of clinics per year. No, where you quit defining it as a clinic. You know, if you just had a couple of your friends there to ride and whatnot.
Exactly.
It's not a clinic. That's, that's not part of it, that's fine. A clinic, to me, means you're going to have a bunch of people, the eight or ten or whatever there at the same time. And I, you know, I don't know that you want to have that. If there's no limit, you could conceivably have it every weekend. And I don't, I think that's.
Well, I'm not going to do that.
That's a little overused.
But I would not want to be unable to invite my friends if we wanted to trail ride.
Mr. Chairman, club year is closed, of course.
Oh, that's, thank you.
I can see where there'd be a limitation to trail riding.
No, no, I wouldn't, that wouldn't be part of the clinic.
You limited it to twelve clinics a year. I think you'd go broke if you did more than those, so. I'm sorry. They'd go broke.
I was saying there should be a limit, but I agree, trail riding's not a limit. I'm talking about an actual clinic itself where you're got somebody coming in to help guide.
Your problem when you do that is. I agree, is getting, Jim, what is the definition of a clinic?
Yeah.
And that's what I was hoping. And I don't think I can come up with one.
How can you enforce what you can?
You'd be more likely to come up with a version than you'd best offer.
Well, and from a staff standpoint, how can you enforce what you can't define?
Okay, you're going to see.
All right, so we're going to vote? All right, I'll leave that alone. But we do that, you accept the loudspeaker.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you enumerate those again so we, if I can have the zoning conditions, which, you got, what, what?
I think she's got them. Let me go, you check me as I go through them. Any outdoor lighting for the riding, riding arena and stables must be designed and maintained so it doesn't become a nuisance. What you explained to us, straight down and on the underside of the pavilion, that's safe.
Then you have the big pole barn.
Right. Limited to the use stated by the applicant, no advertising to the public.
Yeah, the limit, that's, that's the question I want to ask, the, the, the limited use stated by the applicant. What's that stated use where is, there's an email, the only one I see is dated September thirtieth from Mrs. White to Tracy Hadaway.
I don't know if we really need that one as long as we put these other restrictions on it.
Just don't want to get into it later on and then find out where, what they, what she said and what she didn't say. And so that needs to be stricken or, or we'll never hit number.
Okay, right. You're okay striking that, which the number three, limit the use stated by the applicant? Strike that. No advertising to the public. Limit the barn to twenty. Limit the barn to twenty stalls. No commercial boarding, no commercial sales, no commercial horse shows, and no loudspeakers. That's it. All right? All in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks, you're welcome. Feel free to tap.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
All right. The next, next public hearing, which I'll now open, is a zoning text amendment regarding cottage food operators. It's an application of Mark and Toby of Eight Thirty Boat Club Road, Hamilton, to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to allow cottage food operators as a residential home occupation use, and to allow in resort districts. This is the second reading, because the first one before the planning commission. Property is on O-17A, O-28L, O-87. It has been recommended for approval by the planning commission. And I know there were some emails from us, and I would like, because it does involve official code of Georgia regulations at some point, I'd like, if we can, a quick and easy definition of cottage food operations. Can you give us that, Tracy, or Mr. Taylor?
Well, I can tell you what I, what little I know about it, the, this is a license that is issued by the Georgia Department of Agriculture, and it covers, as something was provided you for today, allows cottage food operators, those, that is, people to, to make things in their homes that will be sold commercially at fairs, and that type of, that type of sale. Like deal with bread, cakes, pastries, any of those things that you go to, you know, a fair, or to a church, a bizarre sale, or whatever, and you see people selling, selling various dried fruits, or sauces, those type of things, and, and fruit pies, and candy. And so that's what the Department of Agriculture will issue a permit to allow someone to make those items in their homes to be sold to and consumed by the public. And that's the, the key, I think.
But not sold out of their homes?
Not sold out of their homes.
Sold out of another place?
Yes, out of some, some other, some other locations, not for a commercial in the home. This allows them to do it, and I assume that the Department of Agriculture will have the right to come in and make an inspect inspection of the, the cooking facilities, to make sure the cooking facilities are meeting the, the standards.
The health department does.
Yeah.
And they are to respond to any complaints, or make periodic inspections. The other portion of that is, I read the ordinance.
Yeah.
Is that it's not, not, you can have no commercial kitchen, and you must sell directly to the consumer, not through any middleman.
Not at your home?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a home sale, no.
Did you just say, who did you just say makes inspections? Jim?
Health department.
Yeah.
That's not correct, it's the Department of Agriculture. The Department of Agriculture makes the inspections, not the...
The original inspection. The follow-up is by the health department.
I believe it's all received by the Department of Agriculture, which makes it different than any other kind of food business that's inspected by the health department. That's why we're trying to limit it to cottage food operators.
That was my question, and then...
John, the license by the Georgia Department of Agriculture, is that, is that a one-time license, or has it to be renewed annually, or what?
I would imagine it has to be renewed annually.
Hundred dollars each.
It is a, it would be a condition, a condition preceded to there, the operation, operating, especially if you're permitted to do this, or amend your zoning ordinance to, to allow this, they can't do that unless they are permitted by the, by the Department of Agriculture.
And the Department of Agriculture license comes first?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. When we, when they come to get a business license, then we would have to have verification from the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, Toby's here?
Yes.
State your name and your address.
My name is Mark Toby. I live at Eight Thirty Boat Club Road in Hamilton, Georgia. Mostly called the... I'd like to read a prepared statement by the committee's commission.
Yes, sir.
We are petitioning the board of commissioners to amend the text to Article Five, supplementary district regulations, Section Twelve, customary home occupations. We are asking, we are asking to allow food operations as part of this Section Twelve, which allows a business license to operate a cottage food operation. We have been long-term residents of Harris County. We recently planted a small, productive berry patch and fruit trees. The excess, we've been able to get off of this, we'd like to use as canned, and this is what we do, this is what we make, little jars of jam, preserves, twenty, fifty kinds of flavors we've come up with. We'd like to participate in things like county fairs, the downtown Columbus market, which also has many, if any of you've been down there, many Harris County residents sell their produce down there. But we're not allowed to, because we don't have permission. So we're petitioning the board to allow us to do that. To give you some background on me, I'm a graduate of the University of Georgia with a major in food science. I have over thirty years of experience working for major companies like H.J. Heinz, R.T. French, twenty-something years with Sunshine Biscuits. I have a vast knowledge of H.A.C.C.P., Hazard Analysis Critical Control on Testing Procedures. I have gone online and passed all the A.N.S.I., American National Standards Institute accredited tests, to be a food handler, to get my certificate to operate a cottage food operation. Once the board has approved our petition, I will take the final exam, get my certificate, be inspected by the State Department of Agriculture as a licensed cottage food operator. The state of Georgia has made this industry accessible to those who qualify, and all we are asking is that Harris County file suit with Muskogee County, and many other counties around us, allowing us the same ability to provide a small additional fixed income retirement for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any citizens here who wish to speak in support of this application? Any wishing to speak in support? Wishing to speak in opposition? Or in opposition? All right, I don't know if you need to make any other statements, but you're welcome to at this point in time.
Now, we, we hope that you'll give us a consideration.
Questions from commissioners?
We have a question, the, the, to get a license for this, through the Georgia Department of Agriculture, is that a rigorous process, or is it relatively simple? It sounds like you've got outstanding qualifications, so is that what it takes in order to, to get the license, or?
You would have to be, you'd have to be qualified to get this license to be a service manager of a major restaurant. The test has three hundred and something questions, you have to score at least an eighty. I took the test five times, the first three times I took it, I got a sixty. I've got thirty-something years in quality assurance. I know everything about sanitation, food handling, how to store food, how to handle food. It is a rigorous test, it's not something simple. It's something that a manager of a major restaurant would have to qualify to train all the helpers that work in a restaurant, so...
If I assume that I can give one of these licenses?
You'd be, you know, listen to all those things about coal farms, E. coli, and bacterial counts, and the preservation, storage of food, what temperatures things grow at. No, you won't pass this test.
I've got a couple of questions. This, it would be amending our ordinance, and it would be allowed in A-1... Tell me if I'm reading this right, Tracy. A-1 manufacturing housing to all residential districts and resorts.
Yes, sir. Right now, the home occupations are allowed in all of those districts, except resort is not listed.
Because we don't have resort zones anymore.
No, sir, we have resort zones, and in fact, they live the backwaters as resort. We have a lot of residential districts that are zone resort. So they need to be added into the home occupation.
Do not allow anymore.
We don't allow any, yeah, I understand, I understand. We have some, it's not an active classification.
But right now, you would be...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question.
Okay.
That right there. It's a strawberry fig.
Strawberry fig.
Hmm, okay.
Our most popular one is strawberry rhubarb.
All right, thank you.
But we do make twenty-one different types of varieties that we give away as presents for our family. We'd like to sell some to the public.
All right, any commissioners, any other questions or comments? Close public hearing, entertaining motion.
I'll move for approval.
Do you have a motion for approval, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor? No, okay.
Just from the point of view that, that, like, just, just, I apologize for the, just, as it is.
Talk yourself out of it.
It was, it was a matter of getting things done in the Department of Agriculture, and was that...
Okay, all right. No other comments, questions? All in favor of the motions, if I raise my hand? Motion carries. All right, that's good luck to you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, appreciate your tough stuff.
All right, and our last one is second reading of zoning text amendment for solar collections systems. The applicant is Saul America, who is the authorized agent, or their authorized agent is Harold Jackson Incorporated. They're out of Leesburg, Georgia. Property involved is Outta Case in Callaway Foundation in Pine Mountain. Opposed wording of the amendment is for Article Four, Section Two, Article Five, is to add solar panel sites as accepted use in all zoning districts except residential. It's an accessory use for the planning commission. Solar plant sites are not, they are currently in our zoning ordinance. Is, is Jackson here?
Yes, my name is Pete Frenetic. I'm at Soul America.
Please come up and... What's your last name again?
Frenetic. I'm still with Pete.
F.R.A.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, tell us, tell us what we need to do. How much you want to...
Soul America. We are a solar firm based in Atlanta, and we're working, as you know, with the Outta Case in Callaway Foundation to put a hundred kilowatt solar system located in some land that is very close to the Discovery Center. Think about where the Discovery Center is, and think about the parking area of the Discovery Center that's to the right. So it'd be a hundred kilowatt system, which is about a half acre of land, to give you a sense of the size here. And we're asking that the text amendment be made concerning ordinance to allow solar systems in all zoning districts.
All right. John, this, I mean, this would also, if someone wanted to put solar panels on their roof, something with a...
Yeah, you could not, you couldn't do that in, in a, where I read, in a residential district.
It's for all districts.
It is for all districts.
That's what they're written to plan to do.
Yeah, well, I think they could do it.
I mean, I, you know, with, with solar going away, I would just think that we'll, we'll get any folks that want to put solar panels on their roof to start doing that, so...
Yeah, what I was, was, was looking, I'd seen that in here, that if it's, if one on the ground won't exceed a half acre in size, I think, is that correct?
The system we're talking about, yes.
Which you're planning to put in, but that would not restrict, uh, somebody that's living on a five acre tract from putting in a half acre.
Correct, that has to be in the rear yard.
Are those the remarks that you, that you wrote, even though?
Yes.
Are there any citizens here wish to speak in support of this application? Any wishing to speak in support? Any wishing to speak in opposition to this? All right. Any want to throw closing comments?
No.
All right, commissioners, questions?
Yes, sir. Tell me what this would look like.
Yeah. This particular site is, if you're in the parking area, off to the side, there's a clearing, there's a clearing there right now. Surrounding the clearing is tree, all around, clear. There's an opening that comes in, aside from the opening, it's pretty much a tree line. So you have this cleared area, and what it would look like as far as, and it's flat, which is what we look for when we look for groundhouse solar sites. The equipment, you have metal beams, structure, beam type of equipment. You put those in the ground, you call that fracking, and then the solar panels go on top of that. Solar panels, if you want to orient them towards the south, if you're in the south, you orient the panel this way, right? It's going to generate a series of panels. Correct. Cover the, what are they? Half acre. Half acre.
But the panel, the, you can't, no, no, it wouldn't exceed twenty feet above ground?
No, no, no.
You mentioned the tree line, like you have to cut, mack some trees to...
We'll let them down.
You don't want it to shade.
Exactly, yeah. So we, we have shade, shade buffer, but yeah, we'd probably remove, remove a few trees, but we're not going to have to remove any person's trees, or any of the trees. But yeah, we'd probably remove...
The purpose is just to correct, to collect the direct sunlight.
Correct.
Some solar farms have renewable panels, we're kind of trying to follow, is this from a stationary?
This one's stationary, we'd say this is fixed tilt.
No, and I know, you know, Callaway wants to be, you know, to try and save energy where they can and utilize the sun, but they also want a tracking thing, are there any screening that's going to take place around the border of that?
No, we certainly aren't looking to, you know, inhibit the view. We, we actually would like consumers, visitors, to see it, and Callaway would like that too. The key piece of a project like this is making sure that the monitoring of the production is very available and visible, so we would have monitoring of the systems over here, the Discovery Center's here, we'd have a monitoring picture, a flat panel TV type of screen, and it would show the production. And that's something that's pretty neat, because what happens is, kids, well, for the kids, all of us, you look at it, we see the production that runs along the belt curve. There's not much production in the mornings, and it's sunny, goes up, and it drops down. You see that in a day, a week, a month, a year, and it becomes very intuitive, the kids start to think. So it's a good thing you want to show the monitoring of the system, it's very good.
Is Callaway going to use all of the output from this, or is it going on grid, or...
It, it's actually going to do it to the grid. And, and really, most solar systems, I say most, you know, ninety-nine percent of residential solar systems in the United States are really powered technically as going to the grid. And, and really, most solar systems, um, I say most, you know, ninety-nine percent of residential solar systems in the United States are really powered technically is going to grid, it's not necessarily used in that house. It's going to grid, and then the house is pulling less power from the grid, right? But, um, or they're being charged for less power from the grid, let's put it that way, they're still following the same grid. But, yeah, this power would go to the grid. This particular project is a power purchase agreement with Georgia Power. Uh, some of you might have heard, and they had a program called ASI, Advanced Solar Initiative. So it's a contract with Georgia Power, where Georgia Power's agreed to pay X amount of money for the power from this particular system, which one of the, so it's a contract, it's, it's in ink, it provides, you know, lots of stability, materialized stability to the project as a whole.
You have questions? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
No other questions, we're in the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Before the motion, I, I, as I said, um, I don't have, have any follow-up, as well. Pete's trying to do, you know, I think it's been well followed out, uh, and, um, my concern is, it's only going to every, uh, to every zoning classification. Uh, here it's very clear that this is a resort, and, uh, like I said, it sounds like it's well followed out, plenty of, and so forth, but, uh, hopefully, uh, residential and so forth, I'm not sure what, what problems we may be getting to, but, and it may not be any problems at all, but, um, I'm not sure I will see solar panels on all the subdivision here, side of the road, uh, you know, through some of the mutual countryside, some farms, and so forth, uh, that's just, that's a concern that I have.